Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board. I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you could rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Correspondents, Brian?
None this evening.
None, okay. Accommodations, good news. Brady, you want to start?
All right. Got a lot of performing arts stuff this time.
Awesome.
On Saturday, November 23rd, we had the largest contingent of GHS students audition for a spot in this year's All-State Music Festival. The following students were accepted to represent us and conquered this April. Band Noah Stefan on euphonium, orchestra Casey Palmer on flute, Nico Kendall on the viola, and Isaac Sejen on the violin. In the mixed chorus, Michael Ardita, Taylor Courier, Kalen Emerson, James Fox, Kalen Lavery, Hildy Hieronymus, who got the highest score in her room, Carter Horn, Andrew Tenuma, and Ava Tennant. And then in the treble chorus, Natasha Magliozzi, Julie Stanley, and Fair and Sweet. On Sunday, November 24th, about 15 students participated in the Goffstown Community Thanksgiving Service, adding their music talents to the small congregation at Hillside Methodist Church in Grasmere. On Monday, November 25th, seven students represented GHS at the New England Band Festival at Plymouth State University. On Sunday, December 1st, three students joined Mr. DeRosa's participating in the Second Annual Tuba Christmas Event at the Manchester Community Music School. This week, students are in preparation to perform a Nutcracker this Saturday at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Winter concerts are on December 11th for large groups and December 18th for honors ensembles. And then just one last thing. This Thursday, members of the Speech and Debate Club will be visiting St. Anselms College to meet and discuss with students from 14 other schools about a vast range of topics regarding ethics. That's all.
Thank you, Brady. Ms. Bean?
I'm thankful he took that part for me. I don't know if I ever got the names done quite as nicely as he did. On Wednesday, November 27th, from 7:20 to 7:50 AM, Peer Outreach had a special thank you to the students of Goffstown High School, serving a variety of yogurt parfaits. Students were able to make their own for a healthy free breakfast. Toppings included granola, fresh and frozen fruit, and real maple syrup. It was well attended. They actually ran out of supplies before the bell rang. They're planning a second annual holiday basket giveaway in mid-December to adults currently in the Farnham Center in New Hampshire. Those adults are in treatment for drug and alcohol addiction and are currently away from their families. Peer Outreach officers in charge of the special event are Senior Maddox Turk and Junior Avery Boyver, who for the second year in a row are purchasing personalized items for each of these families. Sam Baylin, the director of Crispin's House, is working with code advisors John Webb and Charisse Salter in purchasing these gifts. GHS culinary creators have had a successful day of ramen noodle bowls with an egg roll at the high school. The kids liked it. The team made the sauce from scratch and worked out all the production procedures. This Thursday, Bartlett, Maple Ave., and Mountain View will be having the ramen noodle bowl, and the high school will be making the base sauce to ensure product consistency and cost efficiency of the production. English teachers have begun their work with Poetry Out Loud. Poetry Out Loud is a poetry recitation competition sponsored by the National Endowment for the Arts. Students in their English classes are encouraged to select a poem and recite for their class competition. Winners from those competitions will then compete after school on January 8th to determine who the school-wide winner is, and from there, the winners will compete if they make into the regional competition for an opportunity to advance to state and national levels. Scholarship money is awarded on the state and national level. On October 31st, the interior design class taught by Ann Kelly and the AP art class taught by Tiffany Ferretti went to a field trip in Manchester. The morning was spent on a guided tour of Frank Lloyd Wright houses. The group enjoyed lunch in the museum's Winter Garden Cafe and then explored the galleries in the afternoon before heading back to the high school. The cultural experience was an eye-opening one for the students and enriched the lessons and materials presented in class. The teachers and students who attended would like to thank you for supporting the arts. Goffstown School District has multiple students, not just high school students, who made the varsity cheer UCA All-Star team. Kira Proctor, fifth grade student, was in the Philadelphia Parade. Madeline and Kylie Peterson, freshmen and seniors, will be in London for New Year's, and several girls also made it to Nationals for AYC Cheer. Our D-12 and D-16 teams will be competing this week at Silver Spurs in Kissimmee, Florida. Unified basketball is starting up tomorrow, and we have 30 students excited to participate. We have a bunch of mentors wanting to help, which is phenomenal because there are schools that have incredibly low numbers of mentors, so our students are making a positive impact and getting involved.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bean. All right, Mr. Davis?
All right. From Mountain View, we have Ms. Roy, who's one of our guidance counselors, been working with the sixth grade, and they've been putting together a digital newspaper every month. The students have been doing all the research, interviewing teachers, and writing the articles, and then she works with them to assemble the newspaper, design the layout, and then it gets emailed out to the staff, and their December edition is going to be coming out here very shortly. Student Government, we completed the food drive. They raised 2,300 cans for the local food bank. This was a little under last year's total, but it was a good amount of food that got sent in a time of need. Little self-serving message, Team 7-1 will be meeting with the New Hampshire Forester tomorrow, so we're going to be taking the kids out to start mapping out and marking the maple trees. And I wanted to send out a big thank you to MVP, who has agreed to help us with our busing to our field trip this year to the Sugar Shack, is kind of how we end our maple unit. So a big thank you to them for kind of helping us out with that. Eighth grade, Ms. Nolte, their classes just completed a unit on figurative language, where the students use their classroom learning to create children's books using Canva, which is one of the school programs that we own digitally. The previous lessons were on strategies for vocabulary acquisition, and they used their learning and created a bulletin board for all students to see. Mr. Glenn, who runs our Flex 2 program, continues to work with the students on community interactions and exposure, as well as this year, before Thanksgiving, they cooked a large amount of macaroni and cheese, which was brought to the local soup kitchen to be given out. And our MVMS Book Fair has started today, and it'll run through Saturday the 7th, which on that Saturday, the 7th, is also the winter musical performances at MVMS. And on that Saturday, any purchase at the book fair gets free gift wrapping, and the performances kick off at 10:00 AM with the band performance, followed by the strings at 11:00, and we'll wrap up with the chorus at 1:00. And we're kind of ending trimester one, getting ready to head into trimester two, which seems to come by really fast. It's kind of amazing to think that we're in December and trimester two is kicking off, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Hey, Heather.
Yes?
Mr. Davis mentioned something about a newsletter that goes out to the staff.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be curious to take a peek at that, because we're getting the Bartlett and the Glen Lake and all the other ones. If that's something that you think might be interesting for us to take a peek at.
They do a great job. They interview a teacher each month, so they highlight a teacher, they highlight the different things going on. I will reach out and put that forward. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thanks, Dan. All right, Ms. Kohler, go ahead.
Great. So our three elementary schools also participated in the canned food drive for the Goffstown Food Network last week as well. Over at Maple Avenue, they made it into a competition where they matched up a class from each grade level to form a team, and the winning team will be able to witness Mr. Demers receiving a pie to the face in the upcoming days. So I'm not sure who gets to see that, but I would like front row seats.
I'm going to need a calendar invite.
Yes.
Who's doing the pie to the face?
I don't know who actually gets to do it.
I'd like to volunteer. Mr. Gross and I would like to volunteer.
Also, over at Maple, Hannaford sent over a check from the Hannaford Helps donation. If you're not familiar with that, community members can tag a school with their receipt, and schools that are able to get tagged can receive money in donations. And because Maple Avenue was a popular choice, they received $450. However, because they were a top school, Hannaford gave them an extra $1,000 on top of that, so they received a check for just over $1,400. So a special thank you to all of our community members that have tagged Maple Avenue for them to receive that money. Also, over at Bartlett last week, they did a school-wide buddy book read where two classes were paired up, a younger and a higher grade, and they took turns reading to each other. So it was a really nice in-school event, and there are pictures of that in the Bartlett newsletter, if you'd like to check it out.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Accommodations, good news? Go ahead, Jenny.
I read that Elliot Nelson, from Mountain View, seventh grade student, won the Pinaglia Lions Club Peace Poster Contest.
Oh, nice.
And it's a really cool poster. It's different skin-colored hands of different nationalities around the world that are holding hands in the shape of an infinity loop for world peace. Really, it's really a cool-looking thing. Also, being at Thanksgiving time, we just had it, I'd just like to say, I am just like thankful for all of our staff at our district, because they don't get a lot of kudos, and they work really hard. So I really commend everybody that works here. And I've worked in other schools, and we have phenomenal people here, from the janitor to the top person, Brian, who works here. And they don't always get very nice publicity, and I just want to tell them that we really appreciate everything they do, and thank you, and please keep doing it.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? Accommodations, good news? All right, seeing none, moving on to public comment. Do we have public comment tonight? No? All right, then we'll close public comment, and we're going to have the Latin honors presentation again.
Mrs. McCann, Mr. McDermott.
Do you want to move the table over? Oh, a little center, or you're good there?
Okay.
All right, well, welcome again. Thank you for coming back.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. So I would say two things. One, happy to start by answering any questions now that you had some continued time to think about the proposal. And two, when we first started going down this road, probably about a year and a half ago, and having these conversations, the very first thing I said to Frank Joyce was, what people are going to want to know is who's going to speak at graduation. Knew that would be right up there, and that is...
You were right, Mrs. McCann.
Yes, right. These are the things. And so we have had conversations all along the way, as we've been working through this, both as an administrative team and with the lead teacher group at the school. And where we have found ourselves first and foremost is, I think there's a lot of opportunity for student leadership positions to have more of a role in that ceremony. And we've talked about having the speaker positions be the student council, or I'm sorry, the class president. Typically, they say, "Welcome, and please join us in the pledge of allegiance," but we think it would be important for that individual to speak, and I think it would also have a larger impact on how students think about those elections and who they elect to those positions, if they know that that is someone who's going to be on that stage representing them at that ceremony. We also think it would be prudent to invite the president of the National Honor Society to speak at graduation, that that would provide a nice balance of recognizing exemplary academic performance. And then the other piece we've talked about is, we typically have three student speakers, the valedictorian, salutatorian, and third honors. And having students have the opportunity to decide annually if they would like to invite a third speaker and to invite a guest speaker, and that could be someone from the community, it could be another classmate, it could be a faculty member, and it would be with administrative approval that they would be able to extend the invitation. So that's where we find ourselves in terms of our proposal for who would become the graduation speakers. And we're happy to answer any questions or have any follow-up conversation on that piece.
Anyone? No?
Called digesting.
Digesting.
And it's a lot, and we've been talking about it and thinking about it, you know, for over a year and a half, so you are welcome to have time to digest and think about it as well.
Any comments, questions from anyone? Go ahead, Jared.
Well, just right off the cuff, the first thing that was coming to my mind when you were speaking was, how do those presidents of the organizations get elected?
By their peers.
And I know it's from their peers and things, but in any political, and this would be a political kind of thing, is that the appropriate place to be? Suppose the person who is, and I'm thinking about my academic career, who would want to excel to be a valedictorian because they know they might speak, but they don't want to be the president of the honor society, or they don't want to be president of the student body? That's what I'm thinking about as I'm digesting through this. Have those kind of conversations been had in your internal dialogues?
Yeah, and I think the reality is, Dan, is, you know, we find, from year to year, a wide range of feelings and emotions about speaking at graduation from those top three There are some who, over the years, have been enough not sure that they wanted to do it, you know, quite honestly.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we've had conversations with students over the years that you don't have to. Like, you know, if you're not comfortable and you don't want to do this, that's not something you have to choose to do. So I think that is the other piece of it, is that we do see a wide range of emotion from those top students about suddenly standing there in front of over 3,000-plus audience members as well.
Lauren?
Thank you. I think that's interesting. So in addition to potentially increasing the amount of speakers that you would have at graduation, and also recognizing many different levels of accomplishment within school by moving to the Latin honors, we're also talking about, or you're also proposing, that the system would be a little more possibly adaptive to folks who, if it only ever has the three people speaking, and then suddenly that second or first person isn't speaking, that would be kind of called, or not called out, but that would be noticed.
Yes.
So it sounds like this system would be even more adaptive to allow, okay, if you don't want to, we have an invitation, we have a teacher.
Yep.
So it'd be more, the student body would have more input?
Yes. Yep.
And it would be more, less people would feel the pressure. I think that is an unexpected...
Agreed.
Unexpected positive change.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jared.
I have no problem with the hybrid approach. I think it's very important that we maintain a meritocracy, especially for a valedictorian or somebody that's speaking. If they don't want to speak, they can pass it off to the next person. I have no problem with that. But I'm fearful that we're going to get away from people wanting to opt in to try and do the best they can and compete against their peers, because as we know, competition drives the best in us, sometimes the worst, but oftentimes it makes us work harder. I would really, really like to see trying to keep a valedictorian or a meritocracy for a speaker at this, but I also agree that it's great that other people are also going to be able to have the opportunity as well. But I think we need to at least maintain some level of challenge for those people that want to opt in for it.
And I think that's been a very real part of the conversation, Jared, right from the get-go with this, in that we've never been fans of, right, trophies and medals for everybody. Truly, that's not been the driving force behind this. I think when we've looked at it, what we have seen is, there are so many ways to manipulate the numbers, and that's the larger concern and challenge that we have, that it is a game that you have to, A, know you're playing, and not all kids and families know they're playing it, and you have to know the puzzle pieces that can go into manipulating those numbers. And that has been the piece where we keep finding ourselves challenged with the current system, that we have students who are incredibly competitive with what they're looking to put on that transcript, what they're hoping to do after high school. But now there's also this worry about what's Kurt doing, and how is that going to impact everything I'm doing? And Kurt might be taking three V-Lax AP classes that none of us know about that are going to hit the transcript at the last minute. And that hasn't felt good.
Go ahead, Jared.
Why not? I guess if you're opting into it, we don't need to explain to individuals what their current status is. We don't need to explain to them what the current rankings are to try to manipulate the system. Call it a double-blind, if you will. But I just, I'm worried that we're taking away the effort that people choose to try to get into and taking that away from them. And I think that that is something that is not going to achieve the goal that we want, which is having great students coming out of Goffstown. Again, this is a choice. If they want to compete, compete for it. If you don't want to compete, that's fine. We aren't going to tell you what your score is, we aren't going to tell you what the makeup is of it. If people want to talk about it, that's how it is in the college, that's how it is in the real world. And so I agree with the route that we're going, but I just don't want to lose that one piece that people might want to still do.
Thank you, Jared.
I guess the only other piece to add to that would be, some of those kids who are taking the three V-Lax courses are able to. They're not caring for siblings, they're not earning money, you know, to take care of their family. So there are other factors at play as well, not just their academic ability.
Go ahead, Brady.
Can I ask Jared a clarifying question to what he was just saying?
Absolutely.
So you're saying that the students shouldn't like be necessarily told what their ranking is, but that should still be like counted? Is that what you were saying?
If we're worried about students trying to manipulate the system and understanding what the scoring structure is, don't tell them. You want to compete on this? You want to take your courses over the five, you know, four or five-year period? You get the numbers, we're going to audit the numbers at the end in case if somebody has a problem, that's what we have to maintain, but you don't need to tell them. You want to compete to be the valedictorian? Compete. You don't need to know what everybody else is doing, you don't need to know what other people are doing. You're competing against yourself, yes, you are competing against other people, but why not?
Isn't that just fundamentally what the Latin system is doing?
No, because you're actually taking the person that is achieving the highest score and allowing them to have that title and the opportunity to speak if they choose to at the graduation. If they don't want to, then it can go on to the next person.
Are you good, Brady?
Yeah.
Jenny?
I think if it's important for people to do their best and be high achievers, they're going to be high achievers. I think this program is really good the way it is, because it allows students to take the courses that they need and want towards their major, towards their interests, instead of taking whatever, because it'll get them that way. And if you think kids don't know for one second what each other's doing, that's a complete fallacy. They know to the point where everybody's getting on their tests, because those are the students that are competing with each other, and they go to the teachers, and they say, you know, "I'm going to argue with you about this point, because I found out my friend had a higher one than I did," and so... And that's not, that's not getting yourself better, that's just working on getting a higher number. And so that's not really improving your education. And I went to a graduation where the valedictorian speech was on General Chow's chicken, which was really sad, because this person was very, very smart and thought it was a joke. So the person who could have gone up and given a speech, and he did, the person did submit a speech to be checked on, but did another speech on the day of the thing. So a lot of kinds of things can happen, too. I think this is a really good program, because it gives everybody a chance to get the education they need, instead of working for points.
Caroline. Thanks, Jenny.
That is something that, from when we sat in curriculum and learned about this and heard a little bit more in depth, and you've been back twice now to talk about it, you know, kind of stuck with me around the kids really only focus on things that they need in order to achieve that, instead of what they want, or maybe to uncover something they don't know that they like or would be interested in. So I do worry that kids are not getting the full experience to really explore at that age, which they really should be doing, because once you go beyond that and start focusing on what you're, you know, what you want for a degree, or what your career is going to be in, then you kind of lose it. And when it's gone, you look back and think like, wow, what, all these opportunities I missed out on. And I do worry about that for kids when they're so focused solely on, you know, achieving that highest standard in their class. I also wonder that, as adults, are we putting more stock into it in our own point of view than what the, like, school community and what the class thinks? So we do take, and I like what Brady said the last time about this, and spoke up for the student population and their thoughts on it, because I think it does shed light on, you know, what is going on in the class and what's going on personally for some of these kids. I like the ideas that you brought around, having the president speak. That is a role that they put themselves out there for, that they want to lead the class. I think speaking at graduation is that, and that is something that, like, if they're going to say, "I want to run to be your class president," and they are selected, everybody is putting stock into them that, like, you are the person that we know you're going to speak, and we think you're going to do a good job, and they're saying, "I want to take that role on," which I think is great. And I think recognizing, if we're able to, through this system of saying, this person, you know, achieved valedictorian status of the class, and, you know, acknowledging them, awarding them with something, I'm not sure what it would be, a certificate or something, is good enough for them potentially, you know, but I think that there's more to this. And I worry about all those other things that have been spoken about with the way that we've been doing GPA and whatnot. So I like your proposal.
Thank you, Caroline. Go ahead, Wendy.
If I could just speak as a parent for a moment, so I'm knee-deep in the college process with my senior son, who's applied to a significant amount of schools. He's a very strong student, not a top 10, but a very strong student. And in going through this process with him, he's had a lot of interviews on campuses of strong schools, not Ivy League schools, but strong schools. And what he's been hearing over and over again is, you're taking great classes. Thank you, as an up-and-coming business major, for taking marketing, for taking accounting, for taking Intro to Business, because it has showed his commitment to what he's going to do down the road, and he's been hearing that over and over. So to be honest with you, I've been very thankful for what he's received from guidance with our school counselors, because they're the ones who've said to him right along, if you know this is the path, these are the courses that are going to help you through that college process. And he is a strong student, he is motivated, but his has been more of, what do I want to do next, not the one day in June, sitting at graduation, and what that's going to look like. So just to give you a parent's perspective with someone who's going through this with their senior, I just thought I would mention that.
Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Jack.
My question would be, I understand that a grade point is up in an AP class, but how are AP classes, like, I would assume, like, AP Physiology might be harder than AP Business Management from an academic standard? Are they weighted against each other like that, or is it just, if it's classified as AP, then it gets a higher weight?
Yeah, just the AP.
Regardless of the curriculum?
Yeah.
But all APs get the same weight?
Yes.
So if it's chemistry, physics, it gets the same weight as world geography, or whatever it may be?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Oh, oh, sorry, Lauren, go ahead.
No worries. Thank you. So if we're talking about replacing a system that has a 1, 2, 3, for like summa cum laude, about how many... about how many students do you think are getting 4.0 or higher? Are we talking about like going from, we're worrying about, well, we're not externally incentivizing, you know, their motivations for rank? Is that going to be a list of still 10 kids? Is that going to be a list of 50? Like I just like a ballpark?
Yeah, it was 15 to 20. So when we took the four classes and kind of looked at last year where they were at, we were seeing on average 15 to 20 kids.
Like per?
Per grade level.
Per grade level?
Yeah.
Per grade level?
Who were hitting that 4.0 plus. Then it was anywhere from 20 to 25-ish for the other two buckets.
So we're still talking about?
Seventy-five to 80 kids.
Okay.
Who would be, who would hit those points of having at minimum an A minus overall average for their career.
It's still a fairly, not exclusive, but it's still a fairly distinctive, like instead of 1, 2, 3 out of 1,000 plus, we're still talking.
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So that sounds, I like to hear those numbers because it sounds like it might, well, are we diluting the process? No, we're still talking about elite quantity of achievers.
And it's focused on hitting that mark of a minimum of an A minus, right? As an overall grade point average for your four years in high school and not saying that it's going to be a moving figure to get to X number of kids. So you're never, the bar's not coming down to say, "Oh, we want to recognize 100 kids, so we need to play with the numbers to make that happen." It's you need to get to this point to receive these honors recognitions.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you. I do remember from CNE, it was, and from the information that you gave the board, this is a much more objective system. So it's not those fractional GPA things. This is actually an equal opportunity, sort of an equity situation.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And students have the opportunity to build as competitive and aggressive a schedule and a transcript as they would like, focused on where they're hoping to land as opposed to now worrying about what other people are doing. Because part of the conversation, so most colleges will say, the single most important thing they're looking for with a student's application is the rigor of the transcript. Did the students take the most appropriately challenging courses that were available to them in their schools? Once we say we rank, now they want to know where the kid falls within that.
All right, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jenny.
And also, we've been working in, well, not we, but you have been, in CNE and providing courses at a higher level in a lot of different avenues. Like kids, along the line of what you've been talking about, if you want to go into theater, before kids wouldn't take theater classes because they weren't honors classes. And we've changed some of those so that there are honor components. And if you're going to go to college for theater, but you don't have any high-level theater courses, then, you know, you don't fall into the category that you were talking about. We've also added some different sports classes for the people that are not going to, you know, get the D1 or D2 scholarships and get into a school that way. We've also worked on some art classes so that they're honors classes, so kids don't have to take an AP class in something so their marks are up. They can actually take a high-level course in what their, what their major is going to be in college. So they're not wasting their time when they go to college. They're not wasting their money when they go to college, but they actually have a path in front of them. And I think this has been like a huge asset to our high school kids, to be focused and really doing with our curriculum the things that they need.
Right. Thank you, Jenny. Does anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Kim, didn't you do a survey?
Yes, so.
Was there some information to share with them?
Yeah, so kind of two separate pieces, right? So the first piece is if we do move forward with the Latin honors, and then if the answer to that is yes, the part two was the request we had from a couple of families of current ninth graders who said, "If you're talking about this, why can't the current ninth grade be the starting class, given that they haven't closed the semester yet?" So we did send information out to the current ninth grade families of 235, 234. We had 52 responses, which actually is a very good number. And 84% of those families were in support of moving forward with this right now for the ninth grade, if the board was to approve it. And what was interesting were, you know, some of the comments, because some of the families clearly have multiple children in different grade levels, right? And a couple of the comments were, "I wish my older child had had this opportunity, speaking about this at the table at dinner. My older child right now said, 'Oh, I feel like all I do is take the next AP class because that's what everyone is doing, even though I don't have any interest in it. And I wish I did, otherwise I feel like I would fall, I would be falling behind.'" You know, so there's a lot of implicit pressure that I think some of those top-tier students are taking as well, to just take these classes that have that higher added value.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Red.
Just very quickly, from what I've heard from Curriculum Committee and the presentations here and what I've read, I really feel strongly, as many have already said, that this is a very positive move for the students and for the school. I think the, you know, the input that we got from parents and from the surveys, it sounds like this is something that would be a positive move. Regarding the graduation, I think that the weight of that is not as important of all the other good that would happen. And I think that the committee, who's already been thinking about this for a long time, you know, what they said tonight, it might change a little in a couple of months or more ideas will come forward. I think I have a lot of confidence that the administration wants the graduation to be a great and wonderful experience, so that is of less concern to me than the actual proposal.
Thank you, Red. Go ahead, Anne.
Oh, I want to throw another wrinkle into this because it's just an inquiring. See if I can formulate this. Because we already know grades, we can categorize them into Latin honors today for every student we have. Is that a good presumption?
Yeah, yeah.
Would there be a reason why we couldn't have somewhat of a hybrid system so that even current juniors, or maybe seniors, if they could choose, could actually get a Latin honors? It probably might be too late for the seniors as they are participating in electing to go to a college.
Yeah.
To have that capability, should the board go with this?
Yes, yes. So the example, the junior class would keep rank, but we would also acknowledge on the transcript and/or diploma, those students who achieved the Latin honors.
Right. And so it could, because what I'm hearing about students, you might have juniors saying, "Ah, now I can take this as a senior and not have to worry about it." Does that make sense?
Yes. Tricky part there is because we still are ranking them and reporting that out, there is going to be a focus on that. Because now they are looking at, what does that look like on the Common App?
And you have to have the rank for those, all students, whether they want to choose Latin honors or not?
Yeah.
Because that would skew everything else.
Exactly.
Okay. What do you think about that? I mean, would it be appropriate to put Latin honors on it as well? I mean, what does it do? What benefit would it give?
I think it's a nice recognition for students who have worked hard, right? So when you're looking at a class for, so the junior class, for example, 285 kids, there's a lot of high-achieving, hard-working kids there. And right now, we're going to talk about 10 of them.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
And because of that ranking, they get recognized at Academic Awards Night, they get recognized at Scholarship Night, then they're going to, right? It's just this progression of, we kind of talk about the same 10 to 15 kids for about a month at the end of the school year, when there's a lot, a lot of other kids who are doing a lot of great things too. And this would create another opportunity to recognize that.
I would submit that we would consider as a board, if we go to Latin honors, to make that available as soon and current as possible, and we can do a segue.
All right. So.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah. Yeah.
So this is something we would want to move forward tonight, make a motion, vote on, whereas people need more time to think? What is the thought of the board?
I just need clarity from the speaking engagement part. We've heard multiple options. If we're going to vote on something, I'd like to actually have that understood.
Okay.
So that we can vote on it.
Clarity of who would be speaking?
Correct. Because as of today, as I heard it, it's the class president, the valedictorian, the saladictorian or salutatorian, however you pronounce it, but those are the three people.
So moving forward.
But right now, but right now, that's what it is.
It is, it's 1, 2, and 3. The class president says, "Good evening, welcome."
Okay.
And then 1, 2, and 3 speak.
And then if we went forward with this, it would be?
Class president, NHS president, and the opportunity for the class to select and invite a guest speaker.
Whether it's a student, a community member, a staff member?
Yeah.
And it would be the senior class that makes that decision?
Yes.
Is that?
Well, if that is, I'd make an amendment that we still maintain the meritocracy of who the highest-ranking person that wants to speak should be able to speak. That would be my amendment I'd put out there.
The valedictorian?
What's traditionally been the valedictorian, or if they don't want to do it, the next person.
Once we're ranking, though, we're ranking, Jared. That's my only.
Well, yeah, but we don't have to give that information to the school. We could have a policy that states it's only that one thing, and that's the only ranking that we're doing. We don't have to actually, if we go to the Latin honors system, we don't have to tell other colleges, "Well, this is what the class rank was for the individual." That's just for a graduation speaking opportunity.
I think an additional thing to think about is if we put our focus on valedictorians, we're going to train kids to be very good valedictorians. We might not be training them for much else beyond that. If we put our focus on getting the broadest experience that you can as a high school student in high school, figuring out what motivates you, what thrills you, what you're excited about learning, maybe where you want to focus your energies, we'll train those kind of folks. So it's really, the conversation we're having is about where we want to put our energy, where we want to put our focus.
Why would you want to take that away from a student that wants to do that, though? That wants to go for it? Why would you take that away from them?
We're trying to take it away from everybody.
Well, that's, that's.
This is fundamentally, it's moving away from that ranking that you're 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and it's recognizing anybody who's over a certain GPA altogether.
Which I completely agree with, we should be doing, but we are in a system where we do promote the best people. And yes, these are the groups that we have, but when there's one job and there's 10 people, it's the best qualified individual that gets that job. That is the system that we live in today in America, and I don't think that we should be going away from that.
But it's not just grades. It's your personality, it's how you work with other people.
Those are the other opportunities that we have. But you have somebody that is very good at their academics, they might not have the social skills to be able to engage with other people, but they're excellent. Freshmen taking calculus, sophomores taking advanced differential statistics, doesn't have the ability to be able to speak and express themselves as other people and being charismatic. Why would we take it away from them to say, "Hey, you had this, you did this, great job. Would you like to speak? That's your, that's your right as being that person, doing that work." If they choose not to, absolutely, move it along to somebody else. But I don't think that we should be taking away from students that have that drive and ability to want to do it.
The minute.
I think the, oh, sorry.
The minute you do that, you're going to have the kids, like I have a student that I had last year who wants to get into an Ivy, and so, so that she can get all the way up to wherever she wants in math, she's taking pre-calc online against my advisement to take pre-calc in class so that she got the full experience and maybe take a statistics course online so she still got her statistics. But because math is mostly algebra-based, her doing that online is probably not the best move. You're going to have kids still just taking all those courses if they know that there's a valedictorian and not branching out.
But they're choosing to. They want to. Why are we going to take that away from them?
So if that's, if that's the case, then we shouldn't even move forward with this. Because this whole, this whole model is to move away from the ranking, the sorting, you know, "I'm 1, you're 2, you're 3." It's the culture of, "I'm competing against you instead of competing against myself."
And it's an imperfect system. And I think that's the piece for me, Jared, that really is the most. If I felt absolutely 100% confident that every single valedictorian we have put on that stage for the last 20-plus years was truly the top student in the class, I'd be right there with you. So there's a lot of ways that that, that's just not the case. And there's a lot of other facts and data behind to support that. But the way that number crunched at the very last minute because of the added value, because I chose to do this as a competency, so it was a pass/fail and didn't get worked into the GPA, because I chose to take this AP course that we offer here at Goffstown High School for one credit, but I chose to take it online for a credit and a half when 20 other peers of mine were sitting here only getting the one credit of that factored in. There's just all of these pieces where you, it's a shell game.
Mm-hmm.
And if I felt confident that we were absolutely 100% every single time, getting it, getting it right by the numbers, I'd be right there with you. But I'm not.
Caroline, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody, if speaking at graduation is so important to somebody, they could run for class president, you know, to really put themselves out there and say, "I want to do, like this is important to me and I will be a great class president too." I'm also wondering from Brady if there is more from the student population on this subject? Like, is there talk about this? Students, you know, conversing with one another about this type of system or no longer being ranked? I know you shared a little bit last time around some of your experiences with some friends who, you know, have been very stressed out about their workload or the competition piece of it all. But if there's any more?
I haven't heard any discussion about it. I don't think, like, the people in my class are that concerned about it since it doesn't really affect them.
Yeah.
Like, I've told some of those, like, top 10 students, but as I said, it's not a change that really does anything for them. So I don't think they have any polarizing opinions. That's about it, really.
Jenny?
I think if you want to work as hard as you can, and if it's important for you to have the best grades possible, there's plenty of opportunities for you to get accolades. Having gone through the process with three kids, you're going to get all sorts of scholarships, you're going to get all kinds of awards in different places. So it's not like if you don't speak at graduation, you're not going to be awarded all kinds of recognition for what you're doing. You're also going to go to the school that you're going to go to, and they're going to give you awards, scholarships, whatever, along the way. So just because one person doesn't get to be the person to speak at, at graduation, all of the kids in the school get to have a better opportunity at an education that's appropriate for them, their skills, their likes. I just think that's much more important than one kid having, you know, all of the honor at graduation. And I'm not really sure. People listen to a lot of the speeches and, you know what I mean? No offense to anybody, but graduation is. is a day when everybody is, like, forming balloons and doing all kinds of stuff. I would rather personally see everybody get the education that they want and need than us, you know, everybody working for points to be the best.
Thank you, Jenny. Yep, go ahead, Jack. Oh, sorry, Dan. Go ahead, I don't know what to do, Dan. Go ahead, Jack.
I don't believe that we run on a meritocracy on job hires. I don't believe the valedictorian in my class was the smartest person in my class either. How many people can name the top three in their class as we sit here right now? Okay. Thought it was much more important to get recognized as Frank McBride's number two in the top ten when my daughter graduated than it was to be valedictorian or saladictorian for me personal, but I might be biased.
Thanks, Jack. Go ahead, Dan.
In the grading system, what I heard but wasn't actually said, and you can tell me if what I heard is, the grading system is not flawed, but it also, in some subjects, could be subjective, which means, like, if I'm in creative writing, perhaps, and I'm fighting to be the valedictorian now, if the teacher likes this style of writing, but it's not my style of writing, but I know I can get a better grade, now I have to adapt to that, which has both positive and negative effects. One, you need to adapt to the group, so I'm trying to convince myself in both directions now, so it's kind of crazy. But it's subjective, and that's, the reason I heard that is because how you said, the valedictorian over the last twenty years, perhaps some were not the number one, but because of the way the system is graded, the numbers said they were number one.
Yes. Yep. Yep. And there's a lot of outside factors that you can bring into it. And, and to be clear, I think this is great and important conversation. But I think we need to put all of these pieces out on the table and have the conversations, and these are conversations we've been having here for, for multiple years. And there's a reason we didn't come two or three years ago to have this conversation, because we've been arm wrestling ourselves with this, and it's, it's not quick and it's not easy, and it took us a lot of time to get here as well.
Kim, can you share how, when we're looking at the math of this?
Yeah.
What's the decimal point that we're talking about? Because when we're looking at the top ten kids, are they separated by a tenth, a hundredth?
Thousands of points. Yep. Yep. We're going out three, four decimal points to determine the differential between them.
It's that close.
Yep. Yep.
So any student that's valedictorian status would be recognized on some level?
Yes.
In that Latin honors?
Yep.
And potentially could speak depending where they fell, like, you know, the honor society or president or something. So they would still be recognized, but it would be spread out?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Final question would be for me. You guys have been talking about it for eighteen months. We've been talking about it for two meetings. How soon do you need a decision to make this as effective as possible?
So a couple of thoughts. We'll meet with incoming eighth-grade parents in March. We would like to be transparent with them at that point in time about what they can expect when their student comes through the door. So if we continue forward with the initial proposal of starting with that current class, we still have time. If we do want to expand it to start now with the current ninth graders, the semester ends in January. And I think we would want to do it prior to that happening.
As a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
But as we asked earlier whether we could have a hybrid system for all students, that hybrid system could be for the freshmen right now because they had that conversation last March.
Yes.
And so we could have that hybrid system as well.
Yes. Yeah. And the only reason we're talking about them is because parents ask.
Yes.
Right? So based on the conversation out there, we had parents reach out and say, "We think this is great. Why aren't we starting it now?"
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Did you have your hand up, Dan?
I, 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 I'm not going to say much again. It's, if somebody has, is recognized, he has a summa cum laude and puts that on their, you know, it's on their transcript, they put it on their resume. Nobody's asking who spoke. Nobody's asking who else, how many competitors were there. You just have that honor, and I think that's the most important part. All of the other stuff, the character and whatever they're doing, that comes out in different ways. And I'm personally ready to vote.
Okay. All right. Well, if people are ready to vote, I'll need a motion in a second, and then we can go from there.
I have a motion to approve the proposed Latin honors grading system as presented.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Before you do a second, if I may?
Yeah.
That is very vague.
I'm sorry.
It's only vague because I'm not sure what was presented. So do you want to be more specific before we discuss it again after to find out, are we talking about freshmen and sophomores? Are we talking about a hybrid system? Are we talking for the eighth grade? I would like to be more specific if possible.
Sure.
So the Latin honors grading system to include the current ninth grade class based on the surveys that were provided and the feedback received from families, to also officially start with the incoming eighth grade class, and they will receive that in March, to include the speakers at graduation as presented tonight. But that's all I'm going to do in my motion.
Was there a hybrid for the current, are you proposing a possible hybrid so that the current?
Four grades?
Subjects, subjects. Students could have Latin honors as well as their grading?
Okay. I thought you were saying the ninth, but for height of?
Possible ten, eleven, and twelve, I thought.
Yes. Yes. To include that as well. Thank you. Yes.
Did you get all that, Denise?
Let's ask Dan.
Did you see the dogs coming out?
She, she will when she goes back through the video and make sure she got it all.
Does that cover everything?
I think it does. Yes. Thank you.
So I have a motion, Lauren. Are you still good to second that?
No, I'm actually not.
Okay.
I don't, I would not agree with the hybrid system. We're doing it or we're not, is my, would be my motion, so.
Okay.
Because if that's, if I understand that your hybrid is let's start putting that on and keep the ranks now?
Just for the current.
Just for the current.
Twelve, eleven, and ten.
So they still, okay.
Yes.
And then it would be only Latin honors.
All right. I thought you were talking about the thing where you're like, let's flip it on the?
No.
All right. Then I would like to second. Thank you.
Danielle, second. Okay. Thank you. All right. So I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Jack.
No, just knowing that this is a hybrid system for the next couple of years, I can definitely approve this. I think it's great that we're going to that. Later years, maybe we'll have that hybrid system in perpetuity, but that's for future boards to actually do. So I can support this.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else? Comments? All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, we're unanimous. And I saw Mr. Davis, Ms. Bean, Brady, did you vote? Yes. And the three didn't. Did you get that? All right. Thank you, guys, for coming again.
And thank you for the conversation and really.
Yeah.
It was a good conversation. Working through it and continuing to push it around the table because we all want to do as best we can by students, and it's important to have the dialogue.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Kim. Thanks, Kurt.
All right. So moving on. So we have two sets of minutes. So we had a set of minutes from last time that Mrs. Moran did check and sent an email, I think, the next day that what was in the minutes is what was said.
Move to approve the November fourth minutes as presented.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jenny. Any further discussion?
Just a little discussion afterwards. Tell me when it would be best for me to ask Reta if her motion was intentional for 4,000 or was her motion because it wanted to be 5,000, but she wanted 4,000. Because I think the amount of money we were talking about was 5,000, right, Scott?
Yeah.
Yes.
So whether or not you would be in support of another motion to add the additional $1,000 to that, what, what we discussed.
Do, do we make the motion to make that? I'm, I'm amenable to that.
Okay. We have to do the minutes first.
Yeah, and then we can fix wherever that was. All right. So I have a motion and a second to approve November fourth meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
We have one abstention. Mr. Davis said yes. Ms. Bean didn't vote, right? All right. So now we need to fix the, where was the four and 5,000? I remember seeing that.
We did the motion at the end.
It was at the end, but it was discussed in the beginning and then?
It was under page eight was the discussion.
Page 10. Reta amended her motion to approve a $4,000 budget transfer line item. It's on the bottom of page 10. I believe that's what we're talking about.
Ah, there it is.
Right. But wasn't that first discussed in the beginning by Scott?
It was.
We tabled it. We tabled it, and then it came off the table.
So I think the table, or the beginning part says 5,000.
It did on page eight.
Okay. All right. So Reta, are you?
It would, it would be a, a brand new motion.
Brand new motion.
To approve a thou, an additional $1,000 budget transfer from that line.
Yep. All right. Do you see it on the bottom of page 10?
Yep. Yep. I make a motion to, to add an additional $1,000 to transfer from line 10-002410-000339 to the DHS athletics contracted service line.
All right. Thank you, Reta. Do I have a second? By Jack. All right. Any further discussion on that one? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right. So we have two yeses for the teachers. Okay. So now the next one was November 18th. Everybody have a chance to read through, see anything? So I'll need a motion for that.
Motion to approve the minutes of Monday, November 18th, 2024 as presented.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second? By Jack. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. One abstention to?
Again, thank you.
Shane abstaining. And then did you get the two yeses? Yes. All right. So moving on to committee reports. Finance. Dan, you want to start with the?
Yep. The manifest. I'd like to make a motion that we approve a manifest presented tonight in an amount of $2,131,303.95.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. All right. Go ahead, Dan.
We've got some payroll taxes and benefits amounting to 1.654 million dollars. Sped, we have three over 5,000. Crest Collaborative for 78.45. Seven Hills, out-of-district placement of a, it's a 24/7, 56,953, and the Strong Foundations for 86.93. General expenses, some books and equipment and supplies from Amazon for a little over 8,000. Dead River Company Propane, 9,700. I'm rounding now. Goffstown Truck Center, around 28,000. This is the kindergarten, late buses and co-curricular. We've got some IT software licenses and access controls from GovConnect. This is 10,500. These are the doors, the, the reader cards for the doors. Home Depot Pro Facility Supplies and Equipment, 17,000. The National Behavioral Professional Development Grant Funded, 5,500. I wonder if Mrs. Kohler could give us?
So that, that's the national assessment for the Behavioral Threat Assessment?
Yes.
That's, so that's a Title IV grant that we submitted?
Correct.
To work with an organization called NABIDA, which is the National Association of Behavioral Interventions and Threat Assessment.
Yeah.
And this is beginning to train and use some norm reference tools to evaluate kids that are threats in school. So instead of saying, we identified that someone has engaged in some inappropriate behavior, it's we've engaged someone with some inappropriate behavior, and we've evaluated them using these tools, and it helps us identify the level of concern that we should have about students.
Okay. Cool.
This, this is a good thing, and this is something that, from a school safety perspective, that we think has been needed. And I appreciate that. You, you, it's easy to take a crazy idea and say, Wendy, we ought to do this, and then Wendy turns around and she finds the grant, she writes the grant, she gets it approved, she puts together the team, she, she did, she did it all. She did it all. Great.
Thanks. You're giving me too much credit, but I appreciate that.
We paid the SAU 192,000, and the town of Goffstown for sewer charges, 22,700. For food, performance food service for food itself, 29,600. Singer Kittredge, Mountain View Fird Services, replacement equipment, not sure what that equipment was for, but it was 6,400.
I didn't get a chance to see the bill, so I know that Singer Kittredge is the one that is the vendor that we use when we replace steam tables, and they do all of our big-time equipment replacements, so.
Super. And that's all the items that were 5,000 and over.
Anybody have any questions, comments? All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right. We're unanimous, and we have two yeses. All right. Go ahead, Scott.
All right. This one is really more for Jared and Jack. We were notified late in the game that the Goffstown Village Water Precinct is instituting a 20% rate hike effective immediately. So that will?
For this year?
Yeah, and next. So, and so this will have about a $4,000 cost impact, Jared and Jack, if the?
But it would be both fiscal years, so it would be the current fiscal year, so FY25, we're going to be short. And when we budgeted for FY26, we didn't know about the increase.
We didn't know about it.
So we'll be short next year, too.
We knew about the sewer increase. We didn't know about the, the, and I say that, that's the Goffstown Village Water Precinct, and that's the high school, Maple and Glen Lake. The Mountain View is on the grassmire, and they have not yet, you know, I don't know what their deal is, so.
I can speak to this. They're, they're getting rid of the reservoir because the reservoir continues to have problems, because I got it, I'm going up to. They're going to put in another underground tank.
Right.
Another well.
Yeah. And the price for that underground well is getting dispersed amongst the users of the water.
So it's a $13 million well, and they're going to get a loan, and they're going to increase the rates to pay for the loan.
Right. Fresh payment savings. At least on the home level, there was one level, and then a year later, another hike. So I don't know if that's what you have also.
I don't think they said that in the letter.
Well, they said that they're going to increase it by 20% for both.
Both years.
Both years. So 25 and 26.
So Scott, as you know, when deliberations come back from the Budget Committee, we just need to know what the amendment needs to be for the monies on the particular lines.
4,000.
For which lines? Because we're going to need to do those.
Okay.
As a group or together, but we need to make that motion at the Budget Committee.
Good point. I'll send, I'll send an email to you and Jack on this. Next was, there is a need to upgrade or add extra storage for our milestone server. So it is, there's issues with capacity for that server, and in your packets, you should have the cost of that. It is not inexpensive, to say the least, but it also, it's almost a total of $33,672 rounded, but it is integral to our overall security camera situation within the district. security camera situation within the district. And if there is a need to talk about this further, I think that there was some discussion in non-public session, but if you want to talk about it more, then that would be a non-public discussion. I have been asked in the past to put forth budget transfers and that's next up on your, what was handed out. So there are two budget transfers that you have before you want us for this and the other one is for other safety related equipment that you did discuss in non-public session.
Go ahead Jared.
So this is actually buying the server and the appropriate?
It's buying the extra capacity?
Yeah.
For the server.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Are we able to move forward or do we need to go on to non-public to discuss further?
I think we all, do we all remember what this was for? Because we can't.
Can't discuss.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was discussed.
Do you need a motion to actually purchase it?
Once you do the next one, which is the budget transfer, you are essentially?
Effectively.
You are.
Yeah.
So the next item on your agenda are two budget transfers. They are both safety related. One of them is GBT one ninety-one and this is what we just talked about. It's the IT safety related equipment and the other one is GBT one ninety-two and that was for facilities related equipment and repairs. And that you did discuss in your last non-public session.
Right.
And I was asked to put forth a budget transfer to pay for that.
Right.
And that is in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. That one, we do have a little bit of leftover of some funds available and regular ed transportation due to the fact that we're not running as many buses as we should. And then the other one is coming from the GHS salary line where we have some open, we have a couple of open positions.
All right, so I'll need some motions for budget.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the budget GBT one ninety-one and GBT one ninety-two, which I believe stands for Goffstown budget transfers, as presented.
All right. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous and the three didn't vote. All right, so we need, so you did both budget transfers.
That's okay.
Yep, one ninety-one.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter. And then Heather has?
She's got them here.
Yeah, she has the one that has to get signed.
Do you need all these signed Scott?
No, just the one that Heather has.
Just one?
Yeah. And then lastly, the default budget and warrant articles, you'll see that at your next meeting, two weeks from today. So the default budget is the current year's budget plus or minus any contractual obligations approved by the voters, which are teacher and support staff contracts. And anything where it is mandated by law. So that will come before the board at your next meeting. My hope is to do it this week and to get the draft out to you in case there are any questions, you can kind of let me know. But ultimately, this is something that, the default budget is approved by the school board or in the case of the town, the select board. So you'll have that at your, at your next meeting. And then in terms of warrant articles, as I discussed in the last couple of meetings, there is a capital reserve fund deposit that you'll see as well. And that is primarily to fund the Mountain View Mister, Mountain View Middle School Cistern Project, which is phase two. And that is in the neighborhood of around three hundred thousand dollars. That will leave another hundred thousand dollars for other type projects. And I'll have a list of those projects for you at that meeting as well. Because we do have a very active CIP with millions of dollars of needs and we'll put some of those projects that are, really should be rising to the top. So you'll have that at the next meeting. And that's it.
All right, thank you Scott. All right, Budget Committee.
Budget Committee, no meetings were held last week. We have a meeting tomorrow that Jack is graciously attending, or maybe not, we'll figure that one out.
I'm good with that. Did they reinstate it at that, at the Thursday meeting?
There is no Thursday meeting this week.
Last, oh, they canceled the Thursday meeting.
Yeah, so there's no Thursday, so there's a Tuesday meeting this week, which is tomorrow. And the next meeting after that is the following Tuesday. And they'll be doing Tuesday, Thursday going forward, probably until January at this point. I did want to share with this, yeah, with this group, because I shared it with Ginny earlier and she, what'd you say Ginny, oh my god?
Yeah. And many other things.
So for the town, just wanted to bring this to the board's, this board's attention because we are having that symbiotic kind of relationship with them. Their current budget for this year that they're in, so this fiscal year, is twenty-seven million twenty-four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. The default budget for next year is twenty-seven million two hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and ten dollars. So the difference between the two default budgets is roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, less than a one percent change from this year's default to next year's default. The proposed budget that's gone before the, the Budget Committee is thirty million six hundred ninety thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. So if we compared it to the proposed budget for next year to the default budget of this year, we're looking at thirteen and a half percent increase, which equates to about three million six hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. On the warrant article, as it is right now, and again, these things change, you know, the select board might enter into a contract, so the default might change for this. But basically, the difference between the proposed budget and the default budget is three million four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which is a change of roughly twelve point five percent. So the select board in the town is looking for a budget increase of twelve point five percent to cover their budgets for all of those services the town provides. Wanted to provide that to this team because we're very minimal. You know, we looked at less than a three percent year over year from our default to our proposed. Unfortunately, the town wasn't able to do that. My philosophy, as, as you all know, and Jack has a different philosophy and Jack's his own man, and I'm not saying that he should do the same thing, I try to steer away from any of the politics in the town and not try to look at cuts or increases. Of course, we ask questions or I've asked questions. But this is one of those situations where do you want to empower us to really start looking at their budget and having our eyes, fresh eyes on their budget, looking for particular ways of maybe reducing or even adding things. Again, my philosophy has been laissez-faire. Don't go into their pool, hopefully they don't come to ours, but I want to share these numbers with, with this board because we all are taxpayers as well.
Thank you Jared.
Jack, if there's anything you want to include on that?
No, I would, I would, I see what you're saying there. They're going to start coming, because the questions at the meeting that I was at, the last meeting the other Tuesday, two Tuesdays ago, it all started to center around the costs. Like, are you going to donate to the, the tennis courts? How much does it really cost the town to plow the school? Those were, you know, how, what, how does that relationship work and where we have the sharing? Where we're trading back and forth, bartering, so to speak, for lack of a better term. So, you know, how much are the rates at? What do we charge for rent at the Grassmere Town Hall to Mary Lou School? I had to tell them that I went to Mary Lou School. That's how long it's been around.
Go ahead Brian.
I would just, I appreciate Jared sharing that, but it really points out the difference in budget philosophy. So whereas we try to have a proposed budget that, and, and I gave Scott a number this year. I didn't want it to be more than three hundred thousand over the default. We were, we were really focused on that, particularly because last year, we didn't get our budget. So lessons learned from the past. If you didn't get the budget, don't come ask for more money the next year. So that's how I've always looked at it. That's a big, that's a big delta. I mean, three, three point six million, wow.
And that's not also accounting the drop off in revenues that could occur, because there are some grants that were being used to fund some positions. Those grants are no longer there. And so, I don't know, you know, the select board sets a tax rate, I don't know what it's going to be, but expenses that they have are higher. I know that the revenues currently are listed lower, maybe those will change as well, but that, that's where we are and I wanted to provide, not a scare tactic, but this is just what's being presented to the Budget Committee.
And there are, was, is there one contract as well?
There's one contract for, I believe it's the paramedic and fire.
Fire.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Go ahead.
I think it's appropriate for me to let you know, I was going to do it under superintendent's report, but I think it goes here. So the Budget Committee has asked for additional information. Mr. Gross was out last week. I let Jared and Jack know that we had put together a document that gives an overview of the, what the administrators and all the schools do. So I want the chance to review that with Scott, but we've got that ready to go for you guys. The Budget Committee also asked for, they want everything about New Boston Central School, which we're, it's already on the website, so they don't even have to ask us, they can just go find it themselves. But they're looking to do some kind of a comparison, I'm assuming, looking at what New Boston Central School has and maybe comparing it to Maple Ave, I don't know what, but we'll make sure they have that information. And the third thing is, I had a request from one of the Budget Committee members to come and meet with and do a little bit of a shadow with our deans of students at our three levels. So I'm going to find a way to make that work within student confidentiality and policy KI. So I want to make sure I can do that for this Budget Committee member, but I wanted the board to know that we've had a number of requests from the Budget Committee for additional information and we'll be providing some of those additional pieces.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more Jared, you're good?
I think that's enough for now.
Yeah.
We're going to be doing deliberations on the town. That's why Jack and I really wanted to talk about, you know, how we should be presenting ourselves, because we represent the school board, we're not individual members elected to the select board. We represent the school board specifically. So we are doing deliberations, at least for the next two meetings, for the town. They might circle back for school after that, but, you know, the next two weeks, definitely town stuff.
Jenny?
Did the town vote on our budget?
Kelly and I were actually, were pretty consistent this year to say, you know, hey, we're going to try to abstain. So I know when they had the stipends, the select board, Kelly as representative, did abstain from that vote. Same thing happened for the school trip. But Kelly asked questions, just like she should, you know, she's a very level-minded person on that. So they've, they've tried to shy away as well.
Go ahead Lauren.
Thank you. Did I hear, I might have misheard you. Did I hear you ask the board what role that the board would like you or Jack to take? Now, I think you've already, both of you have done a phenomenal job on budget, but I thought I heard if you, if the board wished, wished or wanted to say that maybe we should change the advocacy or maybe, did I hear that correct? I could have heard it incorrectly. Or you asked?
Exactly Lauren. Lauren, you've, you've been on the board, on the Budget Committee, you know kind of my style has been, you know, my style, my philosophy has been, town is town, we try not to interfere with them. Based on these numbers, I'm going to continue to do that, but if, if this board has our, you know, us being the representatives of this board, if we want to look at some things specifically, you know, I'm inviting that at this point, is what I'm saying.
Got you, thank you.
And I know that Jack has his and I have mine, so we can look at the books for anybody after, after the meeting as well.
Anybody?
Otherwise, I'll advocate to have them put in to feed all the kids.
Oh, to feed all the kids? I thought you said defeat. I'm like, what?
No, I think we're here to help them.
That's why I looked at you for a second, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead Ginny.
Brian, I know we have an agreement with the town for the track. Does, do we have any obligation with the town as far as the tennis courts?
Tennis courts. So the tennis court request had just come up in the last couple of months.
And I made that.
So we do use the tennis courts, we do have a tennis team, the tennis team plays there. So I think I would have liked to have seen a little more notice. I think I heard a number of about sixteen thousand, is that accurate Scott? Am I remembering that? I think I got that number right. Again, I think we should have maybe had a little more notice, but I think it would be appropriate for us to contribute to that, as we did with the track and if we have shared resources like that.
I was just going to say, how much would it cost if we said, no, we're not going to contribute?
Right.
And then we have to build our own?
Or now, now we're, we're busing to another location, we're renting space from the Y. We're, I mean, we, as it is, we don't have, we don't have a baseball field. We're a division one school without a baseball field. That's a problem. We don't even have one baseball field. So, I mean, this is just an example that we need these other facilities and for our tennis team, we need Barnard Park. And so I have no problem contributing to that. I think that that's appropriate. My only ask would have been, give us more notice, so that we can plan and budget.
I have to say, like, in fairness, I knew about this in the late spring, but I thought that they were going to be doing this tennis court in twenty-six or twenty-seven, not like twenty-five. So that, that's, I did, Rick did tell me in late spring, I just, I thought that it was going to be a?
I mean, but our cycle is, we would have budgeted for it.
Yeah.
So if there was a sixteen thousand dollar ask, it would have gone through the process, we would have put it in the budget, we would have made it clear to the Budget Committee, this is what this is for. So, that's fine.
And we've been playing there as a school forever, because I was the first girls tennis team of Gofftown High School.
All right, is there any more for Jared or Jack with budget? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. So C and E, Ginny?
We have not had a meeting and our next meeting will be December ninth at seven PM at the SAU.
Great, thank you Ginny. P and C, Rheta?
Yes, we had a meeting this evening and we discussed the nominations for both the Cornerstone and the Dream Keeper Awards and we'll be bringing this to the full board this evening under non-public. Also, I wanted to give you an update that the three things did go out last week on Friday. We ran into a little snafu, but first, let me say that Amy Rowley did a beautiful three things image that we could share out. And this was ready to go, I think, on Wednesday and then we needed to consider ADA compliance. So images are not ADA compliant. We're working on that, but in the meanwhile, we sent out a text three things, so we're, we're perfecting it and Amy's been great to work with. From this conversation, we also talked about the need to possibly have a school board Facebook page. So the page would ideally just be for us to push out communications, no, no comments or anything, but it would give us a vehicle for pushing out information about three things, about boards, other communications that we might want to push out in the, in the future. So this is a, a conversation, I think, for the board to consider whether or not we would like to have a Facebook, a dedicated Facebook page for the school board. And I'm, I, I don't think we have time to talk about this evening, but I do want to present it and maybe bring it back to the board, so if anyone has any questions or thoughts about things we should discuss, yes.
Generally, when you do come back, can you let us know who's going to volunteer to keep it updated?
Exactly, and that's part of the conversation.
Not you, Mr. Clodier?
I would have to learn what Facebook is.
Yes, we did, we did talk about, there are some fine details. I mean, even now, for us to get this communication out, it requires us working through multiple channels versus, you know, if we had our own channel to put that out, so that would be a consideration.
We kind of like have a new website that has the Goffstown School Board there, so I'm, I don't know if we need another avenue. Sorry, that's just, as a tech guy, I'm still saying, social media is not my thing.
And, and we can, we can add a little bit more to the proposal, but it was something that came out of this conversation, of trying to get the three things out. So there's that. Also, I wanted to mention that the New Hampshire School Board Association has a couple of webinars coming up in December. One, the change in the adequacy for fiscal year twenty-six, which may be of interest to us. That's the adequacy funding, it's this Wednesday from twelve to one, and that cost is free. And then there's another one on the legislative preview that will be Wednesday, December eighteenth. So. So, you should be getting these updates from the school board if you're interested. And our next meeting is on January 6th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Rheta. Policy, Shane.
Thank you. Policy, we'll be meeting next Monday, December 9th, 2024, at 5:30 PM at the SAU office, and we will be looking to approve some policies a little bit later tonight.
Thank you. SAU Budget Hearing Board Meeting is set for December 11th at 6:00 PM at the SAU. If you can't make it, please let Denise know. Technology Committee.
Technology Committee, I reported out last meeting, we met in November. We will meet again on January 8th at 4:00 in the afternoon at the SAU Central Office.
Perfect, thank you. All right, superintendents, report.
Thank you. Just a few quick ones this evening, I wanted to let the board know, if you haven't heard, that Dawn Ball from the Goffstown Truck Center is retiring. So, Dawn has been with the Goffstown Truck Center, I think, over 40 years at this point, and Dawn has done a lot. One of the things that Dawn does that people don't know about is every time the weather's lousy, I go out and drive the roads in New Boston, and Dawn drives the roads in Goffstown, and then we talk to each other at 4:15 or 4:30 in the morning, and we compare when the plows are out, what the road conditions are, and Dawn has been doing that for four decades. He's been through a lot of superintendents, he and I have a good symbiotic relationship of how we do that, but I just, if you didn't know, and I think a lot of people know that Dawn's wife is the town clerk, Dawn's daughter is a teacher here at Goffstown High School, very connected to the community, great family, and I'm just so happy for Dawn. We need to make sure, and Mrs. Moran's not here right now, but when we finish this evening, we need to take your board photo for the town report, so Brady, you're in charge of remembering that. Okay? We're counting on you, Brady, and you're in the picture.
Okay.
So, we'll do that.
Maybe right before we go to non-public.
Right before we go to non-public, in fact, it will be on those stairs, right there, going down the stairs. You can arrange yourselves in whatever artistic flair you'd like to do, but we need to do that. And my last thing is, if you didn't hear, some sad news to share with the board, Paul Ryder, who was a New Boston School Board member, passed away. So, some of you will remember, Dan would remember, Jenny would remember, I think Rheta would remember. Heather, I don't know if you ever worked with Paul, but Paul was, Paul was a retired engineer who decided as a second career to go be a math teacher at Central High School, and I think it was Central, or maybe it was West. Memorial.
I worked with him for a number of years.
Oh, you did. And when he retired, he was a school board member and just a very good man, and I was really sad to hear of his passing.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Brian? All right, moving on to old business, so we had policies, so go ahead, Shane.
Sure, so the first policy is, policy G, sorry, J F A B D, which is the admission of homeless students. This is required by law. I, we did first reads on this already, so I don't know if anyone has any questions. I apologize, I've been out of loop for the past couple of weeks. Because budgets and all that, but.
It was just some minor language changes in these.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there are no questions, you can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, they'll come back, one more read.
Oh, there's one more, okay.
Yeah, this is just.
Yeah, 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 yep.
Yep. We'll come back to it.
Apologies. All right. The next policy we have is J K A A. I know on this one, we kinda scrapped the policy we had and replaced it with the policy that the New Hampshire School Board Association provided as a template. We didn't do a lot of changes on this because of how sensitive this was with the law and the policies, and, I'm sorry, the laws and the statutes. So, we kind of looked through this for a little bit, and we're basically saying, we don't wanna take too much out. So, if you have questions about that.
Just one.
Sure.
So, the alignment of this policy as written and the program that Mrs. Kohler put together for that training, is it symbiotic at all, because it's behavioral related?
It's similar, so these policies have to do with behavior management, the use of restraints and seclusion. The grant program that we got through NABIDA might be some of those same kids, but this would be for kids that are kind of at risk, kids who might be engaged in making any kind of inappropriate threats against the school or against students. So, there's definitely overlap of these policies and that grant project.
Right, so, and we're adhering to this new wording of the policy for that.
Correct.
Okay, correct. Even though we haven't adopted it yet.
And the last policy for tonight is J L D B A, which is a brand-new policy. I don't know if there are any questions about that at this point, or if we take some more time, we'll get over until next meeting.
Ivan?
What was that?
Ivan, I V I D.
J.
J.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, my previous question is the same?
Oh.
And it does?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Just checking to see where you're gonna rank.
We're in the J section, not the I section. Gotcha.
It's okay, you can still have your Latin order.
And if that is it, that is all from the policy side.
All right, thank you, Shane.
You're welcome.
And they'll come back next for motions.
Correct.
All right, so the next is new business, night lock door project update, Brian.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give the board a little bit of an update, so we are working on, so the board will recall, this was the Citizens Petition Warrant Article for the $13,000 to purchase the supplemental door locks. All of those locks have been purchased, the variances have been done, and the board will recall that the parent group, Goffstown Parents in Action, that brought forward this warrant article project, had indicated that they had an installer for the project. So, I just wanted to let the board know that the installer has committed to doing one of the schools, but at this point, is not able to do installation beyond the one school. I've reached out to the Goffstown Parents in Action, and they are going to evaluate if they might have some ability to procure another contractor. So, at this point, I think we're gonna continue to work with Goffstown Parents in Action, see if we might be able to work with them on another contractor to install this. And if not, then we would plan to go out and look at some bids and get some costing that we can talk about with the board at a later point, but I just wanted to let you know that we have a little bit of a setback on the project this, at this point, that the installer is not able to do all of the schools, but at this point, we're happy to get the one building done, and then continue to evaluate the project from there. So, I just wanted to give that update, and more to come.
All right, thank you, Brian. All right, moving on to staffing.
So, for staffing, you should all have the staffing sheet in front of you, so for notifications only, no action required of the board, we have one leave of absence, we have three long-term substitutes, and I would again thank our great substitutes that we have here, so this is a list of people that we see often, and many thanks to them, and we have one track change, so congratulations to Rachel for that. For your approval this evening, this is a tough resignation for us, we just received a resignation from our data technician, Patrick Walsh, Patrick hasn't been with us all that long, but unfortunately, Patrick will be moving on, that's a challenging position for us to fill, and mission-critical in terms of all of our data and ensuring compliance with all the state requirements. So, do you wanna do these in groups?
Yeah, we'll do this in group, so the technology resignation, I'll need a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept the technology resignation as presented.
Thank you, Shane, do I have a second? By Jenny, any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining. So, we have two yeses, the teachers. All right, go ahead.
Next, we have a request to extend a teacher leave of absence, this is about an additional month for Caitlin Allen, so we would ask for your approval.
All right, I'll need a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to extend the leave of absence for Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Shane, do I have a second? By Lauren, any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous, and all three voted. All right, the next.
So, next, I'm asking and really begging, I'm not above begging on this, I don't wanna read all these names, I really don't. But, there are a number of, so this is the list of co-curricular sports nominations, and I would share how few of these have an N next to them. So, if you look in parentheses, the N means that they're new, and you can see that there are only a couple, I think I'm counting three, three new on this entire list, and on the back, one of the individuals is an already-known coach to us, so it's not really a new, that actually arguably could be a T. But, the other thing I'd like to point at, point out here, is look at how many volunteers there are. These are all people that are giving their time, they're giving their time to Goffstown and New Boston kids, they're not getting a stipend for it, and even just, just look at the wrestling program. In addition to Alex and Josh, who do an incredible job, you know, they've got one, two, three, four, four other volunteers, it's just incredible how many people give so much of their time to our kids, and as we're approving these, I would just extend our continued appreciation to all of these coaches.
Greg, just remind me what the T stands for.
The T stands for transfer, so, like, for example, the transfer for Mr. Bracy is, he was previously the junior varsity coach, so he's considered a transfer to move into the varsity position, it's actually new, but Nate has been a coach with us and a math teacher for a long time.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so I'll need a motion, oh, sorry, Jenny, go ahead.
I would just like to say also that these people are giving opportunities to our kids, and most schools would have these positions in their budget, and we don't. So, to our Budget Committee, this is a lot of money out of our budget because we have people that help out.
And booster clubs that are raising money to fund coaches and fund equipment and fund things like helmet refurbishing and all kinds of things that benefit our kids and aren't part of the general fund budget.
And we ask for all the money that we need.
That's very accurate.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, so I need a motion for the co-curricular sports. Go ahead, Jenny.
I'll make a motion to accept the co-curricular sports nominations as listed.
Thank you, Jenny, do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline, any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any other business that may come before the meeting? Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, a meeting or so ago, I mentioned that one of the Goffstown High School students kicked a field, she was, McKenna Kelly is a field goal kicker, she kicked a field goal and got $2,500 for that, and I just got the letter from the State Lottery Commission, but it would be a good idea for us, as the board, to accept that $2,500 donation from the New Hampshire Lottery and to deposit it into the Goffstown High School student accounts for athletics. And I would just need a motion to that effect, or so moved, as Ellen would used to say.
So moved.
So, Jack, I'm running a motion, do I have a second? Denise, did you get that motion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline, any further discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Shane.
Scott, ultimately, this young lady gets that money, right?
No.
No, it's a donation to the school.
Oh, okay, all right. It's a donation to the school. I was under the impression that she was.
No, 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 no. She did on behalf of the school, and it's gonna go into the student accounts, not the general.
All right, I remember we talked about this, but it was a few months.
She at least gets a tax deduction.
Just get that either. Two scratchies, I think.
Thank you.
Did Scott, you made it clear that even though the letter may have said one thing?
Yeah, the letter stated that she did not.
No, she may not have.
She may not have, she did kick that field goal, I saw it on TV, so, she did, there were two students.
The letter did say that.
And it's wrong. And it is wrong, because she did.
So, when I read the letter, I took it that she missed the field goal.
No, she did not, she made it.
She stuck it?
She did, there was three of them, two of the students made it, the other one didn't, but.
Well, because I remember asking if she was the kicker for a football team, and she has.
She made the field goal, so.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All right, see and none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous, and we had one yes. All right, any other business? Yep, go ahead, Rheta. Oh, the top three things.
Yes, so I've got some, I've got some suggestions, but I'm open for input. I was really impressed with the amount of accommodations and good news, so that's one thing. We approved the Latin owners system. And then, I also thought maybe including the comments around the number of volunteers that we have at the school.
School sports?
In general, but it would be focused on sports in particular.
Yeah.
So.
Everybody okay with that, or is there anything that you would like to add to the top three?
Which for me?
I think everybody's good, thank you, Rheta.
Great, thanks.
All right, so we have non-public.
We do two non-publics.
Yeah, which one are we going in first?
Let's go under A first.
And Jared, you're up. Are we gonna make any votes?
Oh, in, after?
After non-public.
Go ahead, you already started it.
I just remembered it, because I read it in the minutes twice.
Are there any votes after?
Are there any anticipated votes that we would need to make after non-public this evening?
I would not anticipate, you may choose to seal minutes, that would be an action that the board may take after you come out of non-public. I don't believe you would take any other motions, if somebody was so inclined to want to wait around, you're welcome to wait out on the bench, and when the board comes out of non-public, I'm happy to go see if there's anybody who wants to come in and hear if there's anything further. It's not a perfect system, but if anybody wanted to do that, we could do that.
It would be a nice opportunity to let you know as we go downstairs, so that.
We're gonna take the photo, right, Brady?
Yeah.
All right, so before we take the photo, I need a motion to go in non-public, under R S A 91 A 32, you said A, right?
A.
So moved.
By Dan.
I'll second.
Second by Rheta, roll call.
Yes.
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 And yes, all right, we are in non-public, we're gonna do our pictures first. Who's got?